At this point, I'd like to ask the honor of God to please post the colors. How did I do? Are we supposed to stand up? John, I think we're supposed to stand up. Okay, I get what he was telling me. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor DeMaderis.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselor Milburn.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Regular meeting, approval of town council minutes, October 28th, 2024, regular meeting, October 28th, 2024, executive session, November 12th, 2024, regular meeting, November 12th, 2024, executive session, November 25th, regular meeting, November 25th, executive session.
Madam President, I move approval of the meeting minutes as described.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Acknowledgment of the resignation of Nancy Driggs from the Board of Canvases, effective November 27, 2024. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Nancy's resignation with regret, and thank you for her service.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Discussion impossible vote to amend correct motion from 11/12/2024, meeting relating to APRA funds to pay for items previously obligated by resolution from the casino gaming capital account specifically related to DPW garage maintenance equipment and item. Does any of the council have any questions?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the amendment.
Second.
Yeah, women, motion's been made in second. Further discussion?
Yeah, we're back to 333,000 for the street cleaning. Didn't that go up to 460?
We discussed this at the agenda meeting, and I believe that was the accurate number. Is Denise here? The treasurer?
She's out sick.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yeah. Do you remember this?
Yeah, I do. So, this is, this was the original day where we did, so the, the motion that's, the amendment that's being made is actually not impacting the street sweeper. This is strictly for the items that we approved because we didn't have the final number on the street sweeper.
Yeah, but what Jay's bringing up is the DPW director said that the sweet, the street sweeper would be more.
The last meeting, it went up.
Right. Rick.
Correct. But this is, this is just for all the items but, that did not include the street sweeper, and there was one other item that we didn't include on that original motion.
Rick, the sweet, the street sweeper, it's 333.
No, the street sweeper is five, 407 was approved.
407.
Correct. We did that at the.
We did that in a separate ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely.
Separate resolution.
So, this, this is, we didn't do the street sweeper that day.
Right, but shouldn't this number change because of the total for APRA?
No, the only thing we're changing there is the truck. We're just correcting.
I understand that, but the total is not correct.
The total is, no, because the total is, there's a subsequent resolution to that with a, with a.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, on the November 25th meeting.
We're only correcting that because it was the issue of.
But then, whatever happened afterwards? Okay.
Replaces that.
No, I mean, Jay, Jay does have a point though.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, but how, how does that affect?
It doesn't.
It doesn't. It doesn't. No, I just wanted you to talk about it.
This was just to.
This is, this was the original backup for that meeting?
We're doing things a little backwards in a way, because we had to correct some numbers.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, we had to add the pickup truck.
Yeah, if, just to clarify for Counselor Edwards, the street sweeper on here is D, and that one was not approved at the 11/12 meeting, that was approved at the 11/25 meeting, which was the correct 407 number. So, this is just from the original 11/12 meeting where we pulled those two items off.
I understand why you're confused, but we had to add a truck. That's what the difference is.
I know that.
And we just, and we hadn't approved everyone on that list.
Right, right, right.
So Denise, does, excuse me, does the shop equipment, is that still approved?
Yes. Yes, that's a whole nother.
Okay.
Motion.
Thank you.
So, the only, just to clarify, the only thing we're changing is clarifying in the minutes only was F. The original allocation was for DPW garage maintenance equipment. At the council meeting where this was discussed, it was actually converted to a second truck, and it didn't reflect that in the minutes, and that's why we're clarifying that. So, this is just really a technical error. They were correct.
We have to have all this done by December, so that's why it was important to do this today.
So, does this complete this then?
For this, yes.
Because we had talked about, we might have to add another meeting to clarify this.
I believe the outgoing town administrator signed all the necessary memorandum agreements that we needed to have.
He told me that before he left. We're all set, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
We have to, we didn't vote.
I know. So, motion was made in second. All those in favor? Brief closing remarks acknowledged repertaining by departing town councillors. Would any of you like to say anything?
I will be brief.
Oh, wow.
This'll be a first. I, I want to thank all the people that trusted me with this job for the past four years. It's, it's been an eventful four years, and I appreciated your trust. I also want to remind the incoming council that you are embarking on a four, a two-year term of service, capital service. Please keep that in mind for the next two years. I wish everybody well during the next two years. I hope you do well. I think you will. And lastly, I want to thank my wife for her unfailing support over the past eight years that I've been doing this kind of stuff. Unflinchingly, uncomplainingly, putting up with my being gone and doing this. Couldn't have done it without her. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Mike.
I too want to thank those who put their faith in me and their trust in me and electing me twice to this council. It's been a pleasure, and a tough road at times, but a pleasure. While disappointed in not being reelected, that's what our democracy is. You know, you step aside when you miss that opportunity again. I want to thank my colleagues on both terms, from both terms on the council. We have many points of agreement, and when we did not agree, we did our best to try to collaborate and find solutions that work for the town and for our perspectives. And I want to thank especially the outgoing town administrator, the new interim town administrator, all the department heads, and all of our board and commission chairs and members, and the untold numbers of volunteers who are the real movers and shakers in this town. We may sit up here and make decisions, but it's folks who, many of you who are sitting in the audience, and others who really get things done in this town, and our staff, all of our staff. We've had lots of accomplishments that I think we can be proud of, creating the ordinance that moves the casino money into a restricted account for capital purposes, to take that burden off of the taxes. We've spent over 3 million, I know I'll be corrected, it's probably closer to 4, of that money on the school department, and we've, I can't list all of the numerous capital projects that we've been able to fund, some that have been festering for years that need it done. And Rick, I know we put a lot of money, both ARPA and casino money into roadwork, and that paving, and that's something that people really want to see. And it's important, and, you know, I want to thank the chief and the outgoing administrator for the millions of dollars that they've been able to get in federal grants that, you know, sometimes people don't see, but that's what helps keep us, keeping us moving along. And then, the significant improvements to wages and benefits for all of our town employees, including our public safety employees, that we've been able to accomplish. Sometimes it's been a challenging road, but we've been able to accomplish it. So, those are just a few of the things. And, and in terms of the new members of the council, I recognize, you know, I want you to recognize that being an effective counselor takes a lot of work, time, and dedication, and remember that you are taking an oath in a few minutes to uphold the constitution and laws of the country, our charter, the laws of the state, and the constitution of the state, and all of our ordinances. That's an important role for you to play. While you may have made promises to folks that help you, helped you get elected, make sure that you do your homework, and understand that the variety of perspectives that you have to take in before making decisions, and they may be different than what you thought they were going to make, you were going to make. To my returning colleagues, again, thank you for the work we did together and the accomplishments we made. For my supporters, know that I won't be straying far. I plan to remain active, and barring any unforeseen curveballs that life might throw, I plan to run for the council again in two years. And for my wife, I guess this means she'll have to put up with me more nights than she used to.
I too like to thank the town of Tiverton for electing me two years ago, coming in as new guy. Everyone on here, it's been amazing, guided me through, helping me with the ins and outs of how the town actually works. It's big. I enjoyed every bit of it, the meetings, helping the town improve on a variety of things that we do here, up here, which, until you get behind this desk and get into these conversations, it's, it's big. But I appreciate you guys electing me again, and hopefully, you're a new town council. You continue to good work for your rest, for your rest of you guys, all right?
Thank you, John. Yeah, Edwards. Is Wally coming up with you? Yes.
He's hiding behind the other pole.
I didn't see him.
We're attacking from the other side.
He's always with you.
This is an honor of your service to the town of Tiverton.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your service, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
Thank you.
I forget to say goodbye to one of my sons.
If you want to, do you want to?
Yeah, so, congratulations to the outgoing members of the council. They worked diligently on behalf of constituents of the town of Tiverton. I too have been honored to represent the town of Tiverton for a number of years, but as we embark on a new town council, a new town administrator coming in for the town of Tiverton, there's a lot of challenges before the community. One of the things that I believe is always important is obviously listening to your constituents. Constituents are the ones that elected you to do a job on their behalf and be there for them. We live in a new era now that we have emails, not only just the phone calls. When I first started off, it was the phone I had to ring, or maybe it was the phone that was ever around. But I've been fortunate to be elected for 46 years, 20 years on the Warren Town Council, and that was before we had a town manager, and now as an elected official, as a state senator. But the most important aspect beside being embarking in there for your constituents is the fiscal budget. The budget of the town of Tiverton is probably the most important item that the new town council members will be working with, and it's important that they work diligently with the department heads, who are very good in the town of Tiverton, and also work with their constituents in what they would like to see the budget through and back down. So, without further ado, what I'd like to do is congratulate them and wish them well in the next two years, and let them know that myself, and Jay, and Lou DePalmer, and Michelle Lagar are available for them on the state level, but also that the congressmen and our federal senators are there for you also. So, congratulations.
At this point, I'd like to invite the newly-elected council to come forward. Guy, get a seat. Yeah, take a seat.
Try to read in English.
Because I gotta put other people in front here.
We're doing it in sessions.
Oh, you're gonna do it in sessions?
Yeah. So, you can actually get behind the seats, behind the table if you'd like.
Yeah, if you guys want to get behind the table.
I can't see the ones on the side.
Well, they can all, right here, stand right there.
All of you come back here.
This'll be the least difficult thing you do.
Yes. This is pretty easy compared to what's coming.
This is pretty easy. I think it's harder on me than it is on you.
Everyone ready?
Okay, once you're all situated, just let me know.
This is the biggest thing we're gonna do tonight.
This is it. Congratulations to all of you. It's really hard to get elected in any place for any position, and you've all achieved that, and now you have to do the really hard thing, which is do the work. You will never be closer to your constituents than you are as a town council member. It's the closest you are to your constituents. And if you will repeat after me, there are two points where you have to actually say your own name, and then you'll have to say a member of the Tiverton Town Council. So, raise your right hands, repeat after me. I.
I.
Your names. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Rhode Island.
And of the state of Rhode Island.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances of the town of Tiverton.
And ordinances of the town of Tiverton.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties as a.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties as a town council member.
For the town of Tiverton.
For the town of Tiverton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'd like to. I'd like to call up the next group of people that are being sworn in, would be the probate court judge, Diderio, town sergeant, Kevin Noyes, budget committee, Scott Tonner, budget committee, Curtis Dobenstein, and budget committee, John Cello, and town clerk, Joan Shabbat.
Congratulations to all of you as well. And you'll have different things, you have your own names, and you also have your own separate positions. So, raise your right hands and repeat after me. I.
I.
John Cello. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Rhode Island.
And of the state of Rhode Island.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances of the town of Tiverton.
And ordinances of the town of Tiverton.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties as a.
Faithfully discharge the duties as a budget committee.
For the town of Tiverton.
For the town of Tiverton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'd like to call up the charter review commission. Donna Edwards, Michael Janik, Eleanor Byrne, Jerome Locken, Nancy Mello, Diane Santa, Dennis Milburn, Rob Colter, and Nancy Driggs.
Okay, all, you've had three, this is your third shot, you should get it perfectly. Okay? I don't even have to give you the instruction this time. Raise your right hands and repeat after me. I.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Rhode Island.
And of the state of Rhode Island.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
And the ordinances of the town of Tiverton.
And the ordinances of the town of Tiverton.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties as a.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties as a charter commission member.
For the town of Tiverton.
For the town of Tiverton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Are we taking a break now?
Yes. We're gonna take a break now for 10 minutes, and everyone, there's refreshments over here, help yourself. Thank you.
Over there, okay. All right, Joan, you ready?
This is to conduct the election of the town council president. Nominations are now in order for town council president.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate John Edwards.
Second.
Are there any further nominations? John Edwards has been nominated for town council president.
All those in favor.
All those in favor. Opposed? Congratulations to town council president, John Edwards.
All right. So, next order of business is nominations for the council vice chair. Any nominations?
Mr. President elect would nominate David Paul.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All right, with that being said, all those in favor.
Yeah, you can. That's outrageous.
You guys brought the big books, huh?
Yeah, you don't need that.
Take my advice, it's all online, you can just give it right back to Joan.
I'll put it in your trunk, she'll need it every once in a while.
Yeah, more often than not lately. All right, so, next order of business is some brief remarks from the newly elected councillors, so I guess we can start.
You gotta go first again?
Yes, please. Unless you want to skip and come back around. All right. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Finish chewing your cookie.
Thanks, John.
My apologies.
Counselor Komito? Counselor Hayden?
Present.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Di Madiris?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor Paul?
Present.
Counselor Perry?
Present.
All present.
All right, now for some brief remarks. Counselor Komito.
Good evening, everybody, thank you. Nice turnout to see everybody supporting us here tonight. As I promised, I'm gonna give it my best and we'll dig in and hopefully make some good informed decisions and move the town forward. Thank you.
Counselor Hayden.
Yeah, second exactly what Craig said, thank you so much for all putting your support in me, and I look forward to underpromising, overdelivering, and just wanna put a shout out to my wife for the support as well, and thank you all for showing up tonight.
Counselor Janik, would you say anything? We're all technically new.
I feel that new.
Thank you, everyone, for showing up, thank you for your trust in me. Four years on the council, I've learned a lot, I still have a lot more to learn, and we've done, made a lot of accomplishments, and we have so much more to do, so thank you for trusting me to do that again.
I'm gonna say exactly what they all said, thank you, and thank you for electing me. I'm going on my thirteenth year, which I'm afraid might be unlucky, but I'm hoping it's okay. I think we've accomplished so mu- so much the last council, and I hope we can move forward and do more to make this town better. So, thank you, everyone.
Counselor Paul.
What about Counselor Edwards?
As the chair, I get to speak. I get to steal all your good ideas.
Echoing everybody else, thank you, and thank you for the support, and I look forward to working collaboratively with this group and getting some stuff done for the town. Keep moving forward.
Counselor Perry.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Burke, Mr. Edwards, and Dennis for all their hard work they did before us. It's a lot of hours that you guys put in, and I know, because I did it before. And I'd like to congratulate all of the other six councillors up here for winning their elections. And again, I'm looking forward to two great years, I think we've got a lot to accomplish. And working together, I think we can do it, let's move Tiverton forward. Thank you.
And I'll be very brief, but echo the sentiments of our, of my fellow councillors here. Look forward to working with all of you, and thank the recently departing councillors for their service, as well as everybody else who was sworn in this evening. Look forward to working with each and every one of you to advance the town of Tiverton. So, consent agenda, first item up is acknowledged receipt of boards, of minutes from boards and commissions and committees, that comes after. Board of Canvassers, four, historical cemeteries, commission, two, historic preservation advisory board, one. Acknowledged receipt of reports, town administrator, departments, monthly reports, November 2024, police and fire department overtime reports, November 2024. School department, year-to-date budget versus actual report, November 2024. C, approval of tax assessor abatements, eighteen hundred sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Approval of the Bay Street Moratorium extension to June 30th, 2025. Approval of the town council 2025 meeting calendar. Key charter dates for FY 2526 Annual Budget Process and Financial Town Referendum. Town clerk, approval of advertisement funds for 2025 Annual Tree Warden Appointment. Hanukkah Celebration, December 28th, 2024, at 4:30 at Tiverton Town Hall. Approval of license renewals, non-advertised, December 1st, 2024 to November 30th, 2025. Attached list for the holiday license renewals, tobacco dealers license renewals, and the eviction license renewals. Would any councillors like to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Counselor Janik.
B three, please.
Okay, B three. Counselor Komito.
D.
All right, any other councillors? Who have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, Counselor Janik.
I just wanted to comment that I know this is the first or second time we've gotten the Tiverton Public Schools report, and it just is very easy to follow. I really appreciate Mr. Andrade's work on this. The comments, in the comments section, are very brief and just really tell us what's going on, it's very transparent. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Andrade for doing this for us.
Thank you. Counselor Komito.
This moratorium that's going on, is this the one with all the contamination that's been going on for years? Is there any, like, update or anything that goes with it?
No. Madam, Mr. President, to answer your question, the moratorium is extended for another six months. They were voting to extend it six months. We still have one person outstanding that still has not signed off, so it still...
So, no building, is that what I mean? There's no building going on down there, no digging, is that all still in place, or?
No, the, it doesn't correspond to digging, there are certain lots that have restrictions on them, and that is defined in DEM letters and in land evidence.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve for B and for D.
Second.
All right, motion made, second, all those in favor? All right. Public comments. Ms. French, the state delegation would like to speak if that's okay first.
We'll be more than glad to let you go first if you so choose.
I'm leaving like a bee.
This evening, we had a check at the request of the chief. So, he's now doing other duties on behalf of this town. So, we're gonna have his, please, compadre.
Deputy compadre.
Deputy compadre. I'm already told, I was told, it's spent pretty much, so this is timely.
Yes, so, just so you know what the money is, thank you to both the senator and representative for the check. This was to use to purchase a firearm simulation training system. So, it was a virtual training system, so officers can train active shooter events, de-escalation events, like a virtual video game for law enforcement. So, we also partnered with the casino, so their security officers can work with our law enforcement officers in the unlikely and hopefully never event that we have an incident at the casino. We can work collaboratively utilizing these funds. So, my thanks to you as a senator.
That's excellent, chief, because you want the same problems at Cranston Heights.
With firearms. This is quiet, we can put it in a room, we can set it up, it's portable.
So, for the two of you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, this is French, a quick question, you're down here for 11 EF and G.
Mr. President, excuse me, what was the amount?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak now, or would you like to wait till the agenda items come up? Your choice. Whatever you, whatever you prefer to do. Perfect.
Because it's kind of a combination, I don't know if you're gonna take them as a bundle or not.
Perfect. And if you would, just state your name and address for the record, and then please try to keep the remarks to under three minutes.
Okay, and could you please not, if you have answers to my questions or questions, can you also wait until afterwards?
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, my three minutes gets eaten up by you people, and I don't get to make my comments.
And just for, just for a reminder for the new councillors, public comment is the time for the public to comment to us, it is not for open discussion amongst the councils, so if the topic is something that is not on the agenda, and we would like to discuss it, we can put it on a future agenda for discussion from the council, so.
Oh, I don't mind people discussing, it's just that it seems that my time disappears.
I will make sure that you have your full time.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jamie French, I live at Craig Avenue. And I'm hoping that, I'm talking about the rezoning monies for advertising. And I'm hoping that you have carefully read and thought about these drastic volunteer zoning changes prior to allocating money that drastically affects North Tiverton. North Tiverton has been acknowledged by DEM, Mount Hope Bay, as an LID, a low, a low-impact development area. And instead of the town of Tiverton putting that in our comp plan, instead, they went around and immediately began identifying and creating high-density zoning for that area. Now, we can't have high-density zoning at the same time that it's a low-impact area, so it doesn't make sense to me. You know, our changing, there's a lot of zoning changes, but we still allow 360 residential units to be built by one developer at one time. Why, the only reason that Pecassett Ridge is 275 is because DEM lowered the number, not the town of Tiverton. And planning board members have been talking about 500 units, and this is in North Tiverton, not any other place, and they allow this. And so, why do we have zoning that allows 360 units at one time? It's in the zoning. The comp plan says that we are to identify places for waterfront uses on the Secana River. It does not say on Mount Hope Bay, yet we're told that the waterfront zone is there because of the comp plan. Why are we having buy-right industrial waterfront adjacent to residents with 10-foot setbacks? And it's allowable to drive through residential neighborhoods for commercial and industrial traffic to get to the proposed new waterfronts. Why is Grinnell's Beach and the abutment not put into, into a municipal zone? Why are they part of this parcels that are going to be changed to buy-right industry? And non-waterfront commercial and waterfront commercial uses? Why, why don't we receive grants for playgrounds and other things that we need in North Tiverton instead of all the grants that we receive that are basically tearing North Tiverton apart? I mean, there's been like $400,000 worth of grants, and none of them, I mean, it'd be really nice if we have, like, fixed up the playground behind Pecassett School, or the old Bayview School, so that people, children in North Tiverton have a place to play. It's kind of far to go down to town farm. A lot of, you know, we're spending all this grant money on, on planning this high-density infrastructure in North Tiverton, but we don't have infrastructure, like roads and lights or water, sewer, to, for any of this. And it's like, well, we don't have water, but we're gonna plan on this, this, all this, it's just a waste of money, it seems to me. And I've noticed that people have a hard time with the term "industrial." When I say I don't want waterfront industrial, people, people think that fishermen are industrial, which they're not. They think that an ice cream shop is industrial, which they're not. They think that offices are industrial, which they're not. The only industry we have in the town of Tiverton right now are the petroleum tanks and the gas, natural gas tanks. That's it.
Mrs. French, not to interrupt.
The power plant and the solar farm are considered not really an industrial use. And so, I don't understand the whole... so I don't understand the whole concept of, I think we have to be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So item A is actually something we already did from the prior council. Item B, the North End Industrial Business Park Advisory Subcommittee, four public members, there's one vacancy, we have one applicant, Mike Burke, 67 Durfee Road, requesting appointment for a term ending 10/15/2027.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table that one.
Is there a second?
No.
Second?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion also, but are we gonna wait?
Yeah, we have to. All right. So a motion's been made to, I guess, lay it on the table, which means we're gonna continue it later on in the agenda? Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. So a motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to waive our policy.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion, opposed.
Oh, sorry, opposed? Objection? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike Burke, 67 Durfee Road, to the North End Industrial Business Park Advisory Subcommittee. Mike has been working on this committee for a year now as chairman. He's made a lot of progress, and I think it's only fair to allow him to continue.
And I will second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
This committee has been working greater than a year. We've made a lot of accomplishments. We have a program just about ready to set in motion, and Mr. Burke has been very instrumental in that committee, so I would like for people to support putting him back on this committee.
Any further discussion?
Yes. What are the, with this committee and this north end stuff, what are the funds that we've been spending on this whole committee and project?
We did have some grant money.
Yeah.
We had EDC.
This is all casino, yeah.
We did have some from EDC, plus casino money.
For...
I think the first one was how much, Mike?
Hundred and sixty thousand total.
Hundred, all right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, passes five-two. All right. Next item of business is...
Congratulations.
Next item of business is the North End Industrial Park Advisory Subcommittee. There are supposed to be two town councilors on this committee. One is now a member of the public, serving, so we're looking for somebody else to take that position from the council.
So I will stay in my position, so it would just be the second one.
You need someone to join you?
Do I have any councilors interested in joining the subcommittee?
I'll join in.
All right. Do we need to vote on that? Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to appoint Councilor Dimadeiras to the second position on the North End Industrial Business Park Subcommittee.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right, no opposed? Okay. Next item is the Public Safety Complex Committee. There is one member, currently me. I'm happy to stay there unless another member of the council would prefer to take that position.
I would like to.
Councilor Comito? All right, and in that case, I will step down, and I'd be happy to nominate Councilor Comito to the Public Safety Complex Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Good choice, Craig.
Seven-oh. Thanks, Craig, you gave me back a night.
Good choice.
All right. Next is the Semi-Quinsentennial Commission, which Councilor Burke was so gracious to bring to this town. We do need a member to take his place.
I will not volunteer for that.
Is it required in the commission that there be a council member present?
I believe so, in the resolution.
Would anybody like to be on this commission? Well, by virtue of my night coming back, I guess it's gone. I will be happy to do it.
Yeah, well, you just got rid of one, so.
Thank you.
Need a motion on that, too? All right.
I make a motion to put John Edwards, and I'm not gonna say that word again, John promised me, I'm gonna have to, semi-quin...
Quinsentennial.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Perry. All in favor? Opposed? I think Craig's just writing.
Yes, right. Yes, I was writing notes.
All right. Zoning Revision Committee, we do need a council member for that.
Was that Jay?
That was Jay.
Yeah, that was former Councilor Edwards. No relation. Any councilor like to step into this committee?
Discussion.
You can make a motion if you want.
Well, what I'm gonna say is, this revision committee has been ongoing for well over a year. They're close to ending, so I think it's, it doesn't really make sense to, I mean, we can add a council member, but I think that we probably should look at changing the ordinance to allow an outside member to be the chair.
Jay has been chairing this.
He's been chairing it.
And doing a really good job, so is there a way we can change that?
We'd have to amend the...
Put it on the...
Resolution, it's a resolution.
Council resolution, okay.
I make a motion.
So we can table it?
Yep. So do I have a motion to continue this appointment to the next meeting?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Seven-oh. All right. Next is the School Building Committee. There are two council members, as requested by the school committee. Councilor Janik is, I believe, one, and so we're looking for a second.
I'm on it also, Joe.
I'm sorry?
I'm on it.
Councilor Perry, you're there as a citizen, so I think you should take it as a council member. What do you think?
Okay, yeah.
Isn't that a good idea since you've been doing it?
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion for Councilor Perry?
I make a motion to appoint Councilor Perry to the School Building Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
And now we have an opening for a public...
That's now the school committee's problem.
No, we, no, it's the school committee's problem.
Yep. All right. So the next item was assignment of town councilor liaisons for boards and commissions. We have a number of these, and I think in the interest of time, maybe it makes sense for us to continue or just have the assignments come in, and maybe everybody can send an email to myself for which ones they'd like.
In the time being, could I, I have nine, so I would like to get rid of some of them, please.
All right. Which ones would you like to come off of?
I will keep the board of canvases. I will keep the budget committee. The cemetery commis, committee, Councilor Paul's been doing that, not really me.
All right.
And what else am I? The litter committee, I'd like someone else to take that one.
Okay.
Personnel board I'll keep. I'd like to join the planning board. And I'd like to join the recreation committee. And I'd like to have another counselor do the school committee.
I'll take that one.
The Texas Assessor Board of Review, and the tree commission. I had a lot.
Is there any way we can convince you to stay with the school committee?
I'll take school.
Want me to stay there?
We can have two. I mean, my only suggestion there is that, given your history as school committee chair, I think you would have tremendous value.
I agree with that. That's a great idea.
Thank you, Craig. Well, then you're gonna take the litter commission, okay?
I'll take the litter commission, whatever.
And we can have two liaisons to a board. We could have all seven of us be a liaison.
Someone wants to do that? You and I? Yeah, all right, let me think then.
Mull it over, please.
No, I'll do it, but then I think I'll leave the budget committee then.
That's okay. I'll do the budget committee.
I go to them anyway, but it's...
I would like to stay on budget, planning, and zoning, and then the school building.
Denise, could I take personnel board with you?
Yeah, of course you can.
I'd like to have a chance to review that before I put my name.
Absolutely.
So we can have multiple people on these boards, right?
We absolutely can.
We usually do two.
Yeah.
Because there's so many that it's hard not, you know...
Right, I mean, we're just shouting things out and...
Yeah, I just wanted to make some, yeah, we were already on it, so I just wanted to...
I might want to join you on a few.
Okay.
So why don't we do this? Now that we have, now that we all have the list, unless there's something you, Councilor, are hating to attach up?
Oh, I was gonna ask, can you send out an updated list now that everybody just switched and joined, and the list I have is not updated anymore, and I don't know which ones are available for me to put my name in the hat, so...
So at the next meeting, we'll just, we'll have the updated list. If you can email the clerk which ones you'd like.
Perfect.
And then we can compile that list.
I just thought this was a better way to do it, because I wanted to get rid of some of mine.
Perfect. All right.
I'm not even sure when I said yes to you.
All right. So next is gonna be the Board of Licensing, non-advertised public hearings for license renewals. First is the approval of entertainment license for Riptide Sports Grill, One Bay Street. Like to open up the public hearing? Anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak on this topic? All right, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the entertainment license for Riptide Sports Grill, One Bay Street, meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
All right. Seconded. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Okay. Next is the Petroleum Storage License Renewals for King Fisher Housing Associates LP 40 Alicia Circle and Feral Gas LP 896 Fish Road. Like to open up the public hearing? Would anybody like to speak on these licenses? Would anybody like to speak on these licenses? Would anybody like to speak on these licenses? All right, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion to approve the petroleum storage license renewal for King Fisher Housing Associates LP 40 Alicia Circle and Feral Gas LP 896 Fish Road.
Do I have a second?
Second. Meeting all legal, as long as they're meeting all legal requirements.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Last item is the fireworks license renewals, Step-by-Step Convenience, 429 Main Road. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this renewal? Anybody like to speak on this renewal? Anybody like to speak on this renewal? You gotta say it three times.
You do.
All right, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve fireworks license renewal for Step-by-Step Convenience for 29 Main Road, meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor? Okay. Seven-oh. Next item is General Business A, Planning Board, discussion impossible vote to approve the engagement of a monitoring agent to count and report the number of manufactured homes that qualify for inclusion in the town's low and moderate income housing stock. Do we have a motion from the council? Sorry, I'm switching it up, because under Robert's rules, we get to do a motion and then discussion.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the engagement of a monitoring agent to count and report the number of manufactured homes that qualify for inclusion in the town's low and moderate income housing stock.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just to explain this, we have to have a set amount of low-income housing, so some, a lot of the trailer parks will count as low-income. Now, each trailer park does not count as an individual one. It's a group, and then will come as one. So this will help us with that.
Any further discussion?
Am I saying that correctly?
Because the law changed, correct?
The law changed that allowed you to count these. I think it's actually .5 per unit, is it correct? It's not one for one. It's .5, it's half.
Yeah, right.
Right. So the town of Tiverton is currently under the 10% goal. This would help us get closer to the 10% goal. I don't think it's gonna make that much of a difference, but it's a, it might.
It might, a little bit.
And so this is an annual, I guess, an annual assistance for us to count these towards that goal. So someone will monitor and report back to the council, and that'll report back to the run of housing, excuse me, the state planning office, and we'll figure out how close we get to the 10%.
And for anybody wondering...
This comes from the planning board, by the way.
And for anybody wondering, we are currently at 4.86, and the planning board has indicated that this is at most a couple of thousand dollars a year, so relatively short money. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? None? Okay. All right. Recreation Chair Gilfillan has requested a discussion impossible vote to approve the establishment of the Tiverton Kickball League. This was continued from the 11/25 meeting. Do I have a motion from, any member on the council?
Motion to approve the establishment of a Tiverton Kickball League, continued from 11/25/2024.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilor Dimadeiras?
Question. Stu, we already have, like, soccer leagues, and this falls under, like, the same category?
Yes, except those are run by independent entities, whereas this would sort of fall in the same category as the camps programs that we run. Targeted as adult education or adult recreation. So the reason that it's coming back up, and I apologize that I wasn't here in the last meeting, was how that affects insurance relative to the trust, and I appreciate the solicitor checking that it falls under our existing policy.
I think that was Mr. Burke's concerns. I just wanted to make sure that was okay.
I have confirmed with the trust that this would be covered under the trust policy as a town-sponsored event.
All right. Councilor Dimadeiras?
Okay, thank you.
I was talking about it, sorry.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? No opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Fire Chief Bailey, discussion impossible vote to approve application to the Assistance to Firefighters grant in the amount of $17,321. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the application to the Assistance of Firefighters grant in the amount of $17,321,000 for the fire department for EVAC training, emergency vehicle operations.
I second that.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Can you explain to us what this...
Yeah, so it's gonna allow all the members of the fire department to go through an emergency vehicle operations training course. Basically, it's like a COON course, where they'll actually operate the vehicles. It'll be eight hours for, each chef will get an eight-hour day. It'll be an outside company that comes in and provides that training.
And there's no match to this?
There is, that's why I'm here. There is a 5% match. It would be approximately $866 to the town.
So is this fire engines, rescues?
Engines, ladders.
Just the fire engines?
Yes.
Okay. Does everyone drive those?
Yes.
Counselor Janik, if they'll allow you, it's kind of fun.
I think that's.
You're gonna put me on that, Grant?
I don't think she should.
I don't think, yeah, you really don't. You, you really don't.
I don't think she should. Um, so where will we get the eight hundred?
We probably can find that within our budget in training, yes.
All right, any further discussion?
Do we, do we save any money on the, uh, insurance?
I can't answer that question. I don't.
I don't know if we do.
We might.
We can ask.
Be nice.
If there's no savings to the insurance, I think what it comes down to is, if God forbid, something does happen, vehicle accident-wise.
I think when you look at the demographic of our department right now, we have twenty members with less than four years, and we have eleven firefighters on probation. It's real important that the apparatus get to and from the scene safely.
Do they get that training in the firefighter school?
They do at the academy.
They do.
This is just supplemental. We've all, we actually bring in the, the trust, and they do the simulator. We just did it the day before Thanksgiving. But this is just, uh, the Assistance to Firefighter Grants has this as a high priority this year, so there's a chance, a good chance, that we could get this.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Thank you.
No opposed? Okay. Next item is, uh, School Department Discussion Impossible Vote to Approve Allocating Casino Gaming Capital Funds for Critical Improvement Projects. Uh, they've given us three. The, uh, I do not know. The chimney removal at the Tiburon High School, replacement of the exterior doors, and the sound system installation at THS Auditorium for fifty-five thousand dollars. The previous one was one thirty-six, one five-two, and the chimney was sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, do we have a motion from anybody on the council?
Can we discuss?
I'll make a motion for one thing, if that's okay. I'd like to, uh, well.
You can have, you can have a discussion.
Can we have a discussion?
Yeah, you can have a discussion. The motion with discussion doesn't mean you have to vote for it, so if you, if that's the way you wanna run it, that's, that's.
Is that how we're supposed to do it? You get the little yellow book?
It's Robert's rules.
No, I'm not making a motion.
We only have backup for the chimney.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make, I'll make a motion for discussion to approve the chimney removal at THS for sixty-five thousand.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. Counselor DiMedeiris?
Um, the repl, I think that, um, we've been having casino meetings. I think the replacement of the exterior doors and the sound system installation should wait until the casino meeting, because we need to, it's only fair to see the needs of the town, put it all together and decide. The chimney removal, I saw pictures. It didn't happen overnight. It's, it's been like this for quite some time, I imagine.
Not sure exactly how, but it's, uh.
Some of the building.
Major safety issue now. Well, as you know, I've only been there eleven weeks, so.
Yeah, it's become a major, um, safety issue, and that's why I think we should approve this. We've done it for the town. In an emergency situation, we've given casino money. I think the other two is not an emergency, and I think that that should be part of the casino discussion. I only think it's fair that everybody comes with their request, and then we just, we prioritize it. Uh, but because the chimney is a safety issue, that's my motion.
Any further discussion, Counselor Janik?
I do. So I have the five-year plan from the Building Committee, and for the high school, there's to remove the existing chimney for thirteen thousand dollars budgeted, and it was, we put it in under twenty twenty-five, so for next year. But now this is sixty-five thousand, but it's the same chimney?
Correct.
Has the cost gone up that much, or do we just not estimate well?
I provided both quotes that we received, so it should be in your packet.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, unfortunately, the quote.
But it did go up from thirteen thousand to sixty.
Last I heard, it was fifty. I don't know about the thirteen. I saw fifty thousand, and it has gone up to sixty-five.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-four, eight-eight oh.
Yeah. Well, actually, a hundred dollar down payment to, uh, to, it's in there.
That's right, and they did, they deducted that. So we had done this, um, this went to Ride, August of twenty twenty-three. So we would get reimbursed from this, because it's safety, correct?
Yes, it, we, I can, uh, we should.
It'd be like a thirty-five percent reimbursement?
We should, uh, because it's safety, but it is a fixture too, so I can find out.
Do we get, well, if the bricks are flying, it's a safety thing, but do we get reimbursed on the thirteen thousand we estimated and gave to Ride?
No, we get reimbursed of what we pay.
On the actual cost?
We submit invoices at the end of the year, and we get reimbursed on what we pay.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, just, um, for the other two, the replacement of the exterior doors and the sound system. Do you have quotes for those? I only saw the chimney quotes.
I do now. We did it when we submitted. Um, we just had the basic what you see. However, just so everyone knows, the new members, this is not a, you know, approval to allocate funds. We're actually using funds that were unspent on other projects.
Understood.
No, 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 that's not true.
Well, we're requesting.
What you don't spend is automatically put back into the casino pot, and then you have to come back to request for other things.
What you're doing now, yeah.
Yeah, but it's back in the pot, and I think we should wait until the casino meeting in January.
Counselor Camino.
Counselor Janik, in that five-year plan, is there something about replacing the doors also?
There is something for the exterior doors for the high school and the middle school. There's not exterior doors for the other, the three elementaries.
What doors did we replace?
Yeah, I remember, like, a lot of doors being replaced.
Because we replaced several doors.
Eight, that took about sixteen months to come in. Uh, we've done four, uh, over the last two weeks. There are four more should be done.
And that was, that was exterior?
Correct, all exterior doors.
So these, what exterior doors are, so which ones did you replace?
I don't have that in front of me. I know two, the ones that have been done right now are two at Ranger, two at the middle school. There is one more at the middle school to be done, I believe, and then I'm guessing between, uh, high school and Acassit.
So what are these doors for?
These are additional doors. That was part of the second phase of the replacement door project. These were also identified. They were next in line. Now, like I said, the last time we did this was almost twenty months ago. So now with heavy usage, especially at Acassit, we probably have the worst ones there. Basketball uses it, et cetera. But basically, it's almost like two doors at every school.
So the high school replaced exterior in the back when we redid the gym, um, the locker rooms? So that was whatever.
That was part of, yeah.
Just for the, for the rest of the council, the solicitors informed me, we need to keep our stuff confined to the chimney, because that's what's on the table.
Oh, no.
She made a motion to approve the chimney.
Oh, okay, and the agenda.
She made a motion to approve the chimney.
Approve the chimney. Just the chimney, yeah, sorry. No.
Just the chimney for now, and the other two will wait till January.
Then I'll second that.
Yeah.
So, so.
Any further discussion on the chimney, Counselor Janik?
No, not the chimney. I'm just, I don't think I can ask about Fort Barton Heating.
No, we can't.
It's not on the agenda. I think it's emergent.
All right, Counselor Perry, Counselor Paul, any discussion on the chimney?
No.
All right, so we have a motion on the, on the floor in a second. Um, no further discussion?
Just one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I mean, those two bids were quite a difference. I mean, there was no, I mean, that's the only two page you've received.
Correct.
I know.
We had this discussion last week, actually, and the interesting, the, the most glaring thing is that one of them has to provide or is going to provide ten, thirty-yard dumpsters, which is quite some weight. The other one apparently is gonna truck the stuff offsite, and he's probably got a yard to dump it.
Yeah, that's a difference.
Maybe they're gonna jackhammer it on site.
Oh, God.
All right. So, um, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
I'm sorry, so as you know, under our ordinance, is the allocation of this is by resolution only. So this will not allocate it tonight.
Correct.
What will happen is that we'll draft a resolution for the council to consider at the next meeting. This obviously gives me idea of what you want to be allocated. We will allocate it. The resolution will state the money is for this purpose, to the extent that it goes underbid, then money goes back to the pot. So.
Correct.
We don't allocate, this is, we're trying to get away from allocating it by just on the agenda. We're trying to get it on a resolution, so it's very clear.
So the motion should be to ha, to?
I understand what the, we're not gonna, I understand what the motion is as far as, I understand the intent of it, but we're not allocating it tonight, but we should have it by the next meeting.
And, and obviously, for the School Department, um, you know, while we haven't approved the resolution, like, contract, contracting, get the chimney down before it falls down. I mean, it's coming down one way or the other, so. Um, all in favor? Opposed? None? Okay. And just, uh, for your edification, I do agree with Counselor DiMedeiris's notion that we do, the next time we're gonna meet is in January, and we will address the casino meeting, the casino revenue then, so, uh, perhaps we can get the rest of the backup for some of these other items.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Discussion Impossible Vote to Schedule a Public Hearing for Amendments to the Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map, specifically designation of lots on the waterfront-related uses area, and to authorize advertising for the same. Do we have a motion from the council? Counselor DiMedeiris?
Um, I, I'd like to vote to schedule a public hearing for amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, specifically designs of lots in the waterfront-related uses areas, and to author, authorize advertising for the same.
Do we have a second?
Just, just for the new councils, this is just to have the public hearing.
I second.
All right, so, uh, any discussion? Nope, all right, all in favor?
Well, we gotta set a date, sorry.
Well, it's gonna be, um.
We got, we got three weeks of advertising that needs to be done, so, um, all these dates for F, E, F, and G should all be done at, at the same time. And there's a lot of stuff, material, so all, all of this has to be done, if you read the memo from Mr. Romano from our office, all of this has to be done by February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. My recommendation would be to schedule a public hearing either late January, first meeting in February. That gives the Planning Board, uh, time to have their own little work session, if they want to have an informational session, as well as gives them an opportunity to come before the council and explain what they have done before we actually have the public hearing as well. There is a lot of information here. A lot of this has been driven by the moratorium on the special use permits. Waterfront stuff is relatively new and new, and there's other, other technical amendments that we're making. So, um, the most, it's gotta be done before the February twenty-eighth, and you've got, um.
No, February twenty.
Twenty-eighth is the last day that it can be done.
But February twenty-fourth is.
It is be done by the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Does that include time for codification, or it happens as?
Codification, it comes after the fact.
Okay.
So, but I think my recommendation is, and I see the acting chair of the planning, I don't know if you have the acting chair yet.
Vice chair.
My recommendation would be try to shoot for the first Feb, meeting in February. That would give you, give you time, our first meeting in February, but.
Why don't we, why don't we do this if it would please the council? Perhaps the Planning Board would be willing to come and do the informational component on our regular meeting of the twenty-seventh. And that way, we can have it as a mini workshop just for the council, so that we can ask questions and clarifications, and then hold the public hearing where the public would be able to come and speak to us on, I guess.
Are you talking January twenty-seventh?
Yes, January twenty-seventh, and I guess February tenth would be the first meeting, and in the event that the public hearing runs long, I guess we could continue it beyond that, or?
You don't wanna have a separate meeting?
Do we think this is gonna be that contentious after the public does have the opportunity to see the informational session?
Yeah, I just make it a light meeting.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna be.
Is it all related? So we're talking about E, F, and G?
Well, right, I haven't made those motions yet, but yeah.
Mr. President, would you like us to have a workshop for the council, or just be at your, at your regular meeting?
No, no, my preference would be to have, uh, at the regular meeting, the twenty-seventh, we'll do the presentation from the Planning Board, so that we can get all of our questions addressed. Um, I'm sure a number of the questions from the constituents will come through us there, and then ideally, a lot of those answers will be addressed before we ha, hold the public hearing.
Okay.
On, on.
Just so you know, the, the, the Planning Board is happy to do that. In addition, we're going to hold our own workshop once the notice goes out. People will be getting notification in the mail. Some of those people are just be butters, people have questions. Uh, so we're gonna have our own workshop, which will allow anybody who gets noticed to come to us and ask their questions to, which we think will simplify things.
When do you think that will occur?
Well, that's why we're asking the date, because we'll probably do that before your workshop.
Okay.
We'll try and do ours first. So we would have to do ours before the twenty-seventh, then, assuming the notice goes out.
There is enough lead time.
Oh, the notice will go out.
But does the holiday interfere at all?
Just three weeks.
Okay.
Three consecutive weeks.
All right, so.
So if you wanna have it on the tenth, then it needs to be in.
The, the, the formal public hearing on the tenth, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So the, would need to be in the newspaper of January twenty-third, thirtieth, and February sixth.
Perfect.
So we're gonna do it February tenth, Trish?
But our, but we'll, we'll have a discussion with you guys. Can we, can we notice before? Can we, like, notice now?
For what?
For this, the public hearing on February tenth, or does it have to be the three?
Three consecutive weeks.
Three consecutive weeks just prior to the public hearing, or?
That's generally how it's done, yeah. It doesn't say that, but it's generally how it's done, because you don't wanna do it now, and then people are gonna forget, right? So if you do it, so.
No, we, our, our only request is, we would, we would like the notice to be out in enough time that people have noticed to be able to come to the Planning Board workshop, you know, that they'll have gotten their notification. So I, it sounds like we can, it sounds like we can do that once we find out from the clerk exactly when the, when the notice is going out. There's the advertising notice, but then there's the written notice that also has to go to certain parties as well.
Correct.
And will the written notice go out at the same time, or ahead of time?
I prefer to go out ahead of time if we can get the dates.
Okay.
Because you need to set your date. Now, your, just so we're clear, the Planning Board's informational session is not required.
No.
It's just more of a informational.
It's an informational session for people.
Ease the concerns that people may have.
Exactly.
The meeting that counts is the zoning, the, the, this, this public hearing on the tenth, or the, whatever date, the tenth. That's the meeting that, February tenth.
Counselor?
So January twenty-seventh, we're gonna have a meeting, so there'll be public comment, so people can come up and comment.
February twenty-seventh, but I'm assuming that we went, adopted after the tenth meeting.
No, but what I'm saying, February twenty-seventh, we're gonna have, like, a workshop during our regular meeting, so there will be public comment allowed.
February twenty-fifth, January.
I'm sorry, January.
Oh, you confused me. You said February, yeah, yeah.
Just to bring that up, because.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, well, that, that's, that's the workshop that I think the Planning Board will give the council for that, just so you can ask some questions.
Right, it's gonna be a regular town council meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
But we will do, but we will do that workshop with, with no public comment on it, because it's strictly for the information of the council. And then that will also be televised, so we'll be able to get some questions answered ideally in advance of our public hearing on February tenth.
So we're setting the date for February tenth with your motion?
February tenth, yes.
My motion is February tenth.
And if, uh, I could ask Counselor DiMedeiris just to amend the motion to, I guess, cover F and G at the same time? So we can notice everybody.
Sure, so, um, I also would like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on February tenth on amendments to the zoning map related to the waterfront zone, creating one of, one waterfront, two zones, and to authorize advertising. And then I would like to, uh, vote to schedule a hearing on February tenth to authorize advertising for amendments to the following sections as listed. I'm not gonna read them all.
That's perfectly fine.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Janik. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Mr. President, um, we have a young, we have a young lady in the audience who's been renting property down, um, by the waterfront. She wants to open a business down there. She got caught in between all these zoning changes, and now she's gotta wait until February third.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Why don't you come up to the mic, please?
Well, before we, is this in relation to?
The zoning.
Zoning, it's relation to the zoning.
We, we might not be able to actually have the conversation, because at least for us, we're stringing too far from just the, the discussion around advertising for these things. But I would, I would, I would encourage you to counsel, to talk to the vice chair of the planning board.
Yeah. Just the only question I had was, will this be taken care of by the end of the year?
No.
Sounds like February tenth.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Perry. All right, item H, Discussion Impossible, Discussion Impossible Vote to Extend Health or Medical Insurance for Retired Employee Christopher Cotta through December thirty-first. I think this should be twenty twenty-five.
No.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, it's just.
The end of this month?
He's already covered through the end of this month, because his last, his, the insurance is paid upfront, therefore.
So gonna pay a year of his insurance? That's not what we intended, is it? It was twenty twenty-four. Joan?
No.
It's talked about a year.
So, I'll shed some light on this.
Go ahead.
So, uh, it's my understanding, um, that, uh, the former administrator was looking for a way to extend out before having to make his decision on health insurance, and he had asked for, um, us to extend another six months. So when I saw the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, I assumed that that was really supposed to be twenty twenty-five, that somebody put down for a year. And in exchange for us doing that, he's going to avail himself of our interim town administrator, uh, essentially as needed, especially as we come into the budget cycle, um, you know. That was it.
Yeah, that's not.
But he's, he is effectively covered until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, because the health insurance premiums cover you for the month, and he was in, he's been covered since his last date.
I don't think we should go a year, though. That's expensive.
Again, whatever the council's pleasure.
Unfortunately, every other employee has to leave, and their insurance is the same situation, so, I mean, I think you're gonna open a can of worms for.
For, for reference, um, we did do the exact same thing, six months for Jan Reitzma, when he severed, uh, service.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into that, but there was another reason for that. There was another, yeah, that, there was, I can't get into it.
Do we know what the cost is for the insurance for an entire year? Is it, is it a thousand dollars? Is it a hundred thousand dollars? What is the number? I'd have to check into that, because, uh, the former town administrator did not get a traditional HSA like most of our employees do, because he's over sixty-five. So he was getting an HS, HSR. So it actually was that the money that he puts in, um, it's actually his money, and unlike a traditional HSA, he doesn't get to access it like our other employees do, because it was a retirement plan. So if, uh, the council has additional questions, I can definitely look into this, if you wanna table it for a little while.
I think we should table it.
I can definitely get you some hard numbers about what the impact would be, but I can tell you, in the conversations that I had with Mr. Cotta, he was looking for six months. He wasn't looking for the full year.
Correct.
Um, but looking at how we set up the retirement plans traditionally with our employees, we front-load every January first. So it's, it would kinda be negligible if it was six months or a year, if the town was responsible for doing it January first of twenty twenty-five. It would have been count for the year. So I would request that the council, we table this. Let me look into this a little more, and I can get you some hard numbers on what the impact would be for the former town administrator in the town.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, can we do discussion on table?
Discussion on table.
All right. Do you, are you doing it period certain, or?
Table it till next meeting.
Till the next meeting?
Next meeting, and if you could provide those other details, that'd be much appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Knowing the number would be, be great.
Yes, sir. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, so, next one. All right, last item on the agenda is. All right, last item on the agenda is the discussion and possible vote to cancel the December 23rd, 2024 council meeting. Before, before we have a, a motion on this, I would like to point out that I understand we just tabled the last item, which is problematic now given that the next meeting will be in January. So with that, do I have a mo- do I have a motion to cancel the meeting?
Do we have a quorum that could make this meeting? Because last year there was a problem, people went away and we had to cancel it. So that's the question.
I will be in town.
I will be in town.
I'll be present. I'll be present.
I, I won't be able to make this one, but that's fine. You'll have a quorum.
I'm sorry?
Light agenda.
We could do that.
We could have a light agenda.
All right, I mean, we can still-
Why don't we have a meeting after Christmas? Like just do a spec- just, so just make, because that's a tough week. I don't know how you guys feel about it. Like, can we make it the meet, the, the, the week after, make that-
The 30th?
The 30th?
So make December 30th. No, 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 that's fine. No, it-
Yeah, she, it's, it's up to us and we have to advertise, we, like four days in advance, so.
I mean, to get the paperwork, if we had to file for the, we have a debt, it has to be done by the 31st. I think with, if we're going to extend the insurance, I, I think there's a-
There is. I mean, I know traditionally with our full-time employees, it is, they, we front-load the HSA's January 1st. So I'd have to speak, I'll speak with the town administrator-
So if we voted December 30th?
Correct.
Would that be all right?
I'd have to check with Mary Lou just to make sure.
All right, so as far as canceling December 23rd, like what is the council's pleasure? I will be present and-
It's up to you.
We can do it if we want to do a meeting two days before Christmas.[1656.51]